23rd town council workshop to order. Appreciate you guys coming. First on the agenda is employee recognition. Bruce, are you?
I think we're gonna start with Bron, but I want to comment after you do it too.
I'd like to introduce everybody to Robert Ridgeway. He's been here for five years.
Awesome.
Sorry, this is your fellow. Anyway, Robert's one of our heavy hitters in stormwater. He started running the Vaktor truck for us. He's equipment operator about a year and a half ago. And so thanks to this gentleman right here, there's thousands of feet of stormwater pipe and hundreds of basins that are actually cleared of sediment and flowing and not flooding because he's busting his hump out there getting it done.
And I'm keeping the eastern seaboard from flooding.
That's it. That's right. And not only that, Robert brings a lot to the table. He's an excellent carpenter. He's done a lot of work with our stormwater staff, doing carpentry work, construction, and things like that. And overall, once again, one of our guys is just a positive team player, brings a lot to the table, and we really appreciate him.
Yeah, thank you, Brian.
Awesome.
Thank you so much. Thank you, sir. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to, Robert and I go back, we didn't realize this till he came to me one day when we started talking, going back, we go back probably 30 years back in Greensboro. Robert's a talented musician, I forgot to mention that too. He used to play in a club in Greensboro, we used to go see him, and he actually played my sister's wedding, so we sort of...
Awesome.
And he, yeah, and we also had a connection with the former mayor he used to work with too. So we had a lot of connections, interesting catching up.
Did you know that prior?
No, I didn't know he was working here until he came up and we started talking about our former mayor. He said, "You know Ray Combs?" I said, "Yeah," and then we started talking, then I realized who he was, and oh my gosh, he played my sister's wedding, and we used to go see you. Robert and Wayne was the little duo they played, and were great and a lot of fun, so it was really neat catching up with him.
Small world, huh?
Yeah, and he's done a great job here, so.
Awesome. Any others, Bruce, today?
I think that's it.
Okay. Second item on the agenda is a presentation on the Sunny Day Flooding Project.
Mayor, Council, good morning. I have the flood team is back. Want to give a presentation and answer a few questions after they have been studying the area for a couple of years now, and they'd like to go over that with you. Thomas, are you gonna?
We're off.
Okay.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
This is great. I'm Dr. Katherine Van Arde. I'm an assistant professor at NC State. I'm a civil and coastal engineer by training. Hi, everyone.
Can I just interrupt for one second? And it's, I know it's hard to do because you're used to walking and teaching in a room, but the folks at home won't hear you unless you speak into that microphone. So if you would try as best you can, that would be helpful.
Sure.
Good morning, everyone. Miyuki Hino, I'm an assistant professor in city and regional planning at UNC Chapel Hill.
Hey, everyone. I'm Thomas Thalen, grad student at NC State, working under Katherine.
Okay. So we come here every year, and we give you an update.
Now made him self-conscious about the microphone.
I know, I know. I also, I should preface, I have a concussion, so I have a really hard time reading and focusing. So I'm only gonna do the first four slides today and then hand it over to my colleagues. So we come here every single year, and we tell you how often it's flooding in your community. Today, we have a lot to talk about. We're not just gonna tell you how often it flooded this past year, but we're gonna tell you why it flooded. And we're also going to give you some preliminary results from the survey that we sent out to the community in April, and also talk about the workshops that we are conducting within the town over, or we started this past month, and then we're going to be doing this throughout the rest of the year. So we currently maintain three flood sensors on Canal Drive. This is Thomas in the lower right. We have water level sensors that are located within storm drains, and they measure the amount of water that comes up through storm drains and makes it out onto the road. They also measure water coming down the street and piling up on top of storm drains. These water level sensors are accompanied by real-time cameras that are located on the stormwater pumps, systems that are maintained by the town. So we're not only able to just track a single point of water level in the drain, but we're also able to track the spatial extent on the roadway with the camera. And all of that data is available to you in real time on our website. Our website is up here. It's go ncsu.edu/cbflood. So there's a direct link for the cameras and the water level sensors in Carolina Beach. So anytime it's flooding, you can take a look at those cameras and water levels in real time. I should also preface that we maintain these sensors throughout the state, so we don't just have sensors in Carolina Beach. We also have sensors in Beaufort, in New Bern, and in down east Carteret County. And what we're really focused on in our research is floods outside of extreme storms, so the everyday flooding that you guys experience here, the shallow, frequent floods. So we define floods as any amount of water on the road, and we do that because, for the most part, it's salt water, and it can impact your vehicles. We're trying to understand how often you might be impacted by driving through these floods. So this is really any amount of water on the road. What you're looking at here is a plot of how frequently it flooded in Carolina Beach. This is the flood duration in hours. Each of these dots is a flood from May of last year through May of this year. It flooded 71 times at our sensor that we maintain at Clamshell and Canal in the drain. So 71 floods translates to 65 days of flooding in Carolina Beach. And that includes the extreme storms that we saw over that time period, so Adalia, Ophelia, and the December nor'easter. And if we remove those storms, we had 60 days of flooding in Carolina Beach last year. So just to put that in context, for the rest of the state, Beaufort saw 20 days of flooding, and I'd say it's a pretty comparable town in terms of the infrastructure. They also have storm drains, and they also try to block some of the salt water from coming out those storm drains, just like the town of Carolina Beach. And then down east Carteret County, which is more low-lying, it's more rural, they saw 122 days of flooding. So just some context there. And the flooding was distributed throughout the year. You can see that we have dots basically in every single month, and Thomas will talk about why. But most of the days of flooding that we saw was concentrated in the fall, which is pretty typical for this region, and Thomas will go into why. So with that, the concussed person are gonna stop talking, and Thomas, you can take over.
Quick adjustment here. So what I'm gonna do now is walk you through a few more flood counts and talk about a little bit of analysis that we've done to try to quantify the importance of tides, wind, and rain in causing flooding in Carolina Beach. And to do this analysis, we're gonna look back at our data from 2022 to 2023 that we've had a little bit more time to process and analyze. The content I'm gonna talk to you all about today is summarized in all the full gory scientific detail in a paper linked on this slide, in case anyone is interested in reading the full report. So we know from you all that tides, wind, and rain are important in causing flooding along Canal Drive, but we wanted to find out just how important are each of these factors? Can we quantify the importance of tides, the importance of wind, and the importance of rain in causing flooding? So to do this, we use both data from our flood sensors and a computer model that allows us to simulate the individual contributions of tides, wind, and rain to water levels in the yacht basin and on nearby roads once flooding starts. I have an example of the model output up on screen where we show water levels simulated every hour at the intersection of Canal Drive and Florida Avenue. So in the model, we can turn the contributions of tides, wind, and rain on and off to identify the role that each of these individual processes plays in flooding. For example, in the GIF up on screen, I show how much astronomical tides alone contributed to a flood on January 22nd, 2023. Now, when I say astronomical tides, I mean just the change in water levels caused by the gravitational pull of the moon and the sun. And I want you all to notice that while the low area along Florida Avenue is overtop, floodwaters do not reach Canal Drive. But when we turn on winds in our flooding model, we see a different story. The contributions of wind to water levels, in addition to tides, push water high enough that it moves around the corner from Florida Avenue to flood Canal Drive, which is something that we've heard from you all is happening in real life. And these water levels actually move far enough down Canal that flooding reaches our sensor at the intersection of Clamshell Lane and Canal Drive. So that's how we validate our model. We look at that sensor water level, and we see, does it agree with what our model's putting out? In this case, we found that it did. Model outputs like this GIF help us to quantify something that you all probably already have an intuition for, and that's the role that these different flood drivers, tides, wind, and rain, play in causing flooding on Canal. So we can also use data from our sensors to analyze the role of tidal and non-tidal sources of flooding. We know from Town of Carolina Beach staff that they use thresholds based on forecasted tides and making decisions on when to close Canal Drive. For example, when astronomical tides are forecasted to be higher than six feet, the floodgates alarm Canal Drive are closed to block access to the road. From 2022 to 2023, we found that 20% of the floods we measured at our sensor occurred with forecasted tides greater than the six-foot threshold. When forecasted tides are between 5.25 and six feet, a town employee will monitor Canal Drive and close the road if flooding starts. An additional 50% of the floods that we measured occurred within this tidal range. Our sensor data show that the remaining 30% of floods occurred at forecasted tides below the monitoring threshold. I'm gonna refer to these going forward as unexpected floods, meaning that if we go purely by tidal predictions, the flood is unexpected. Now importantly, just because we're calling these floods unexpected does not necessarily mean that Town of Carolina Beach staff did not recognize the flood and closed Canal Drive. We know that town staff do consider drivers other than tides in making their decisions for road closures. And my use of the word unexpected, that just means that the tidal forecast alone was not high enough to trigger monitoring of, monitoring or road closure. So what did we find when we looked at these unexpected floods? Well, like we've heard from you all, wind plays an important role. 11 of the 14 unexpected floods occurred with wind blowing out of the northeast. And the six deepest floods that we measured from April 22 to 2023 all occurred with that northeast wind pushing water down into the yacht basin and elevating those bayside water levels. The other important driver of unexpected flooding was rain, which played a role in seven of the 14 unexpected floods. In fact, if you look at all 14 of those unexpected floods together, there was either wind out of the northeast, a concurrent rain event, or both of these things happening at the same time. So wind and rain are really important in driving this unexpected flood. To kind of summarize, this analysis allowed us to put some numbers to the local knowledge that town staff and residents have shared with us about the importance of wind and rain in flooding. This analysis could be used, for example, as new evidence describing flooding in grant applications, or we'd be happy to talk with town staff further if they think that any of our results could be useful in keeping an eye out for flooding from tides versus wind versus rain. Lastly, we can use our model to analyze the effectiveness of different flood mitigation strategies, which is what we're currently working on in our community workshops. And Miyuki will tell you more about those.
Thanks, Thomas. So I'll be moving into our survey results. We sent out many, many postcards. I'm sure many of you here received them several times and filled them out about our questions for you all about how you're experiencing flooding and what you want to see done about it, and then the workshops that we've referred to a couple of times that are now underway. So we sent out postcards that look like these in January, and then again in February, and maybe again in March. So we gave folks quite a bit of time to respond, and we ended up getting a really great response rate, higher than most of these kind of similar mail surveys that you can do to different households. So we got 363 responses to our survey, and we grouped them based on these four geographic zones. And so of course, given our interest in flooding and what we've heard about Canal Drive and Florida being a problem, we had north and east of the yacht basin as kind of smaller geographic zones of interest, and then we also grouped folks south and west, as you can see here on this map. So we got responses from all zones, which was great. Most of them, more of them are from south of the yacht basin, but that's also a much larger zone, as you can see. And so it was great to hear from all regions, not just places that kind of are known to be the most affected. We asked a lot of questions, and we're still digging through this data, so what I'm sharing here is really just our first summary of what we're seeing in it. We asked folks about what types of impacts they experienced. About 40% of people reported at least one impact or disruption from flooding, again referring to not extreme storms, right? So the more routine, small stuff that Thomas and Katherine had been talking about. The most common disruption we heard was disruptions to trash collection, which we have documented, as you can see on this picture, but really a wide range of things. Inability to leave the house, health concerns from water quality, property damage, difficulty commuting. There's a long list of things that folks reported that were concerning to them, things like lost rental income, challenges getting insurance, and so forth. When we look geographically, so here, this is, each of these kind of sets of bars along the bottom is a different impact. And then the height of the bar is showing the share of residents that said, "I have that impact," based on these different geographic zones I told you. So on the far left, that's trash collection disruptions. You can see that for the north and east of the yacht basin folks, those are in blue, the darker blue and in green, 60% or more of people from those regions were telling us that trash collection is a problem for them. And you can see consistently across all of these impacts that the dark blue and green bars are the highest bars, right? So those are the largest share of folks in those zones are telling us that they experience those disruptions. But really importantly for us, it's not the case that people who are south and west of the yacht basin are not experiencing any of these things. We actually see disruptions are fairly common throughout town, so 20%-ish of folks south and west of the yacht basin are having trash collection disruptions, have health concern from water quality, have experienced property damage, and that type of thing. So that's really important as well, that we're seeing these things beyond maybe the traditional hotspots that people are thinking of as flooding problems. We also asked about interest in different types of response strategies. We call those flooding mitigation strategies, and we asked people to rank things on a scale from one to five, where one was strongly opposed and five was strongly support. We averaged all of those ratings, and what you can see here is the different strategies along the bottom, and then how much people supported them, the height of the bar. Things like expanding stormwater infrastructure and stormwater pumps were the most popular strategies that we put out here. Different types of bulkhead responses, so raising bulkheads, sometimes on private land, sometimes public or both, were also quite popular. And then the least popular response was doing nothing, so maybe not responding would be the least popular thing. Removing infrastructure was the second lowest after that, and raising all infrastructure was the third lowest after that. One thing to note here is the strategies that we described, for the sake of the survey, they weren't extremely specific. And so we didn't say, "We're gonna put a stormwater pump right here in this place, and it's gonna pump water from place A to place B." These were general categories of strategies that we wanted to gauge interest in, so we didn't ask people to consider legal restrictions, permitting restrictions. We didn't go really deep into the feasibility of any of these. These were just getting a broad sense of where people's attitudes were. We can also see that for some of the strategies, the support really differed by zone. So here is, again, broken down by these four zones, responses to this question about how much people support removing infrastructure from areas that flood regularly and restoring wetlands. So the top, the dark blue, again, is north of the yacht basin, the green is east of the yacht basin, and you can see based on those graphs that most people in those zones are in their strongly oppose and oppose categories for this particular response strategy, whereas if you look at the light blue and the tan, those are south and west of the yacht basin, and the reactions there are more mixed. More people there are kind of in the neither support nor oppose category. It's pretty evenly distributed across all five response categories. And looking at stuff like this is really important to us too, because of course, folks who are most affected, their attitude towards what happens is extremely important, it's gonna affect them really directly. But really, the whole town has a stake in how these responses evolve, and so we want to make sure that we understand these attitudes across different places. Okay. We also had an open-ended question that just said, "What are we missing? What did we not ask you about?" And so this Word Cloud shows the common responses that we saw in that open-ended response. Of course, Canal Drive jumps out. A lot of people talked about Canal Drive. Development restrictions were one that we had not put out there, that many people mentioned. Also restoring and protecting wetlands and reducing impervious surfaces, those were three things that we pulled out from this open response that we've carried into our workshops that we hadn't asked about initially. So now moving on to these workshops. So we took all of that survey information, and we want to use it now to dig more into detail and get more into those things I mentioned before, like where would we do this? How would we do this? And what impact would it have on the flooding? So we're doing that through a series of workshops here in Carolina Beach. Our goals are to identify strategies that are in line with the preferences and values of people who live here, and to test the effectiveness of the strategies of flood mitigation responses, both today and in the future. And as you can see from what Tom has presented, we now have this really great tool to test what would happen if we put in stormwater pumps? What would happen if we raised bulkheads in certain places? And we can do that, how would it affect flooding from rain? How would it affect flooding from wind? What about tides? What about a combination? And so that's the approach that we're trying to take in this workshop. We had a really overwhelming amount of interest from our surveys, which was fantastic. There was a question at the end of the survey that said, "If you're willing to give us more of your time through these workshops, please give us your contact information." I was hoping we would get about 20 people to say yes, and I think we had about 150 people opt in, which was wonderful, but unfortunately, we can't hold a workshop with 150 people just by the nature of the interactive format that we have. So we randomly selected a smaller subset of participants, and we had our first one last month. We're gonna have three more. We are working now on kind of ingesting the input we got from the first one, and I'll go more in, more depth into that. And then we will certainly come back and present a summary of the workshop findings once they're complete, and we'll have a report to share publicly as well. A couple of things to note about this workshop effort. This is a research project. We are university researchers, and so while we're involving town staff and inviting them, and they have been really valuable in shaping how we structure the workshops themselves, just because they're there doesn't mean that something is gonna happen. And just because they say something sounds like a good idea doesn't mean that it's any sort of formal endorsement or implementation plan. We're looking at the effectiveness from the perspective of reducing flooding, but we're not looking at the financial or the technical feasibility of strategies, so we're not costing things out, for example. And we're also not going to dive into what is currently legal under local, state, and federal regulations. So for example, one response that comes up often is a mandatory minimum bulkhead elevation all around the yacht basin, which currently would be not feasible under current local authority. So just because we consider something and say, "This would reduce flooding in this way," doesn't mean that it can happen, or it should happen, or it will happen, but we are trying to provide information about how effective different responses would be. So in the first workshop, we reviewed the survey results. We shared a lot of the data that I just shared with you today. We explained the model, so just as Thomas did, we showed people what the model does. And we asked our workshop participants to go through and mark up a map and talk about what types of response strategies they would want where. And so they put sticky notes and drew with Sharpies all over a map explaining what types of ideas they had. What we're doing now is summarizing all of that feedback into a set of specific strategies that can be tested in the model. So that's things like actually figuring out where we would put pumps and where they would pump water to, modeling this idea of a bulkhead around the yacht basin and seeing how effective it would be, reconfigurations of Canal Drive. Folks had a lot of interesting ideas about ways to deal with that particular flooding hotspot, and things like permeable pavements to increase infiltration. So we are working on modeling these things, and then once we've made some progress on that, we're gonna reach back out to the folks who participated in the first workshop. We're gonna convene again, talk about what we're seeing, and try to refine those strategies a little bit further. Our goal is by the end of the fourth workshop, we'll have kind of coalesced around a few strategies that are, again, in line with what people want to see for the town, and where we understand how they would affect flooding from rains, tides, wind, again, both today and under future conditions. So with that, I think that's all we have to share with you. Again, we want our data and our work to be really useful for you all, and so we have our data coming in live online at this website you can see here. We will hang out and stick around after this, so if anyone has questions, concerns, input they want to share, please tell us, and we are eager to hear more. Thanks.
So, excuse me. First off, thank you very much. We can't thank you enough because it gives us a data-driven approach. It's very emotional for some people. If it's your front yard, it's very emotional. So I think the data-driven approach is good. Any questions from council for these guys?
No, I just appreciate the perspective you had, Katherine, when I asked if I could join. You guys selected people specifically for this purpose, and the results and the work that you did needed to be taken just as a group, sequestered of sorts, and then come back and presented. So this is the first presentation, done very well. I think it was logical, the way you organized the segments. When's the next one? Because it seems to me it's a pretty compelling case that the problem that we've been admiring needs to take a little bit more action beyond, I think, the street ends, Scotch Bonnet, Clamshell, Starfish, done well, Captain's Quarters, whatever ends up happening on Florida, in addition to what's already been done. I saw a brief mention of infiltration. Not looking for your opinion on it one way or the other. Based on your three sensors and the cameras that capture the temporal and spatial extent, spatial extent, and then I just figured the temporal over time, the tidal intrusion and the tidal flooding, is there a way to capture quantity from that? And maybe that's just...
Quantity of water, you mean?
Quantity of water.
How much?
Then would then be, you know, find its way eventually down through the drain, and then back out into the sound or somewhere from those three cameras. Thanks.
Yeah, so not necessarily from the three cameras. We could go out and survey every point in the image and come up with a volume that way, but that's just three intersections, and people live beyond those three intersections. So that's where the model really comes in, where we can come up with volumes from that model. model. But the infiltration piece that you mentioned, where that was really suggested was the upper road and not Canal Drive. But our idea is to look at infiltration. Look at the volumes of water that would need to be removed from the roadway and pumped someplace else, or that could be stored in groundwater if there was permeable pavement on the upper road, rather than actually implementing it everywhere in the model. There's not a lot of places naturally that water can infiltrate here. But one thing I do want to emphasize, we don't do any feasibility studies. We're not consultants. And so a lot of the ways that we're going to go about modeling these strategies are about flood volumes, reducing flood volumes, moving them elsewhere. So something else that's come up a lot is the dune infiltration idea. And we will need to look at that in terms of a pumping volume and not necessarily the engineering behind any of these strategies, what would need to be put underground in order to pump water. So it's really investigative. What's the end result? How long will we have to pump? How much water will we have to pump? Those sorts of things.
Right. And I'm hesitant, I'm torn here because I want to dig into some of this conversation, but at the same time, I don't want to bias. I like the way you guys are coming at this totally unbiased, data-driven. We have information probably that you don't have, but I don't want to get into that because it can then become a biasing factor for you, right? I mean, for the pure research. Like, we have some of those, this might work, this definitely won't work, cost, expense, you know? But if we have that discussion now, close your ears. That's all I'm saying, because I don't want you to say, well, let's don't go down that road because they're never going to do it. I don't want that.
Well, we're driven by what's going on in the workshops. And it's not what's coming through town council, not to dismiss your ideas or your points, but what we're modeling has to come from these workshops and the people involved. So what you'll see moving forward in our next visit to town council is really going to be those ideas and how much they reduce flood volumes in the roadways, what roadways now, under tides, under wind, under rain, but also five years from now, 10 years from now, when we have higher sea levels. So we do have some reports from the town and from different town council members, from the community, about different ideas. And it definitely doesn't bias us in any way because we're driven by what's coming out of those workshops.
Good.
So the more information, the better.
Yeah. Pardon the mention of that, just simply because I've been looking at this thing for years, and you guys are here at the right time, and instincts will always be for me to act.
Bruce, do you have any, I mean, so the path we're on currently is around bulkheads. So we've asked for legislation. We've asked to give us more authority there. We've had several bulkhead projects. You want to give a quick two seconds, or kind of just for all of us of where we are?
We are working on things Councilmen mentioned, the bulkhead. We completed on starfish. We've got Scotch bonnet and clamshell scheduled next. And then we're doing some stormwater improvements on the captain's quarters. And I think you saw one of those graphics they had, the Florida Avenue bulkhead. We still have the funding of that. We rolled that over as a key, we feel is a key element to keep some of the flooding down. Obviously, it's not going to cure the flooding, but as you can see on that graphic that they had, how it, what happens there. However, we need cooperation from the neighboring properties to do that. Right now, we don't have that. They've got concerns, just understandably, it's their properties. But the way it's, the wetlands are growing there, we could interfere with our road and infrastructure there, but we'll keep working on that. In the meantime, I think we'll be interested to hear the modeling they come back with as we make recommendations further for council. And did have discussions with Representative Miller about that legislation. Didn't bring it back up in the short session, but his legal staff, and we'll look at it, too, had discussed some options there that maybe will be discussed in the next session.
Yeah, my understanding, their issue with the legislation was not really the, it was more about the punitive piece of it more than the actual giving us the authority. So are they rewriting? Have we rewritten? Who would rewrite that? Us or them?
I think it would be together, working with them. We've had discussions, but nothing brought up this year. So I think it'd be something, be in the next session if something was approved.
Awesome.
But it'd be, yeah, different than what was submitted originally.
Because it looked like the piece of legislation was centered around one possible solution as opposed to something more holistic.
Right.
Like mitigation of the tidal intrusion act.
Yeah, we did it based on the aptem study we did. That's why we came up with that legislation, and that's why we've been focusing on bulkheads.
Right.
Okay. Any other questions?
So, once again, I just want to thank you guys for doing what you're doing because it's, you know, whenever you get someone else doing the legwork for you, it's awesome. So I appreciate that. So Carolina Beach, we're not the only one going through this. Are you guys working with other townships or boroughs? And if you are, is the process the same, or where are you in the process, and what does it look like?
Yeah. So we, it's, I'd say the most similar town in terms of infrastructure that we work with is Beaufort, the town of Beaufort. And they're a little bit higher than you in elevation. Development looks different. The stormwater infrastructure is a little bit more connected than it is here in Carolina Beach. And of course, it's at a different angle along the coastline, so there are different contributions from wind and tides and rain. They started to put backflow prevention devices on their stormwater pipes. So you guys are really leading the statewide effort there, I think, in terms of backflow prevention devices. People are learning from you guys and seeing how hard that is and how often you have to maintenance them from biofouling. They've added some permeable pavement at some higher elevation points in Beaufort. We aren't doing any modeling with Beaufort. They've done a lot of resilience modeling. Do you remember the program, Resilient Beaufort?
Yeah. It was through the, it was through the Division of Coastal Management's Resilient Coastal Communities Program. They've been doing resilience planning through there.
So they have a lot of modeling for their community at different sea level states and for different scenarios. But similar conversations are going on in the town of Beaufort. In north, in north Carteret County, so the down east area, it's more rural. There are many unincorporated communities. The solutions for flooding or strategies to mitigate flooding look different, but we're also doing workshops in that community as well. But different models, flooding just looks different there.
And I would add that I think one of the real, like, one of the reasons why we've been able to push forward from the sensors to the survey to the workshops here in Carolina Beach is because the town staff have been so helpful to us and so supportive of this work in allowing us to move it forward. And that's certainly not the case everywhere. And so one of, I think, one of the reasons why a lot of our effort and a lot of our progress has been made here is just because it's been such a, it's been such a fruitful place for us to work, and the staff have been incredibly helpful.
Awesome. Anything else?
Well, I think, for those of us who've attended the NC Byways, we know that Beaufort has implemented a lot of the living shoreline model because they do have a different topography than we do. So they were able to use and implement a lot more the living shoreline model. So I think that's, makes a big difference, too.
Yeah, I think that's true. And all of the possible solutions, which I think what they're alluding to is, some things will work in some places that won't necessarily work here, and things that work here won't necessarily work there because of all the factors that they mentioned, right? I mean, their geography, wind angles, you know, where's all this water coming from could be completely different from one town to the other.
It's not a one-size.
It's not a one-size-fits-all. Exactly. Awesome. Any other questions? Mike?
I'd like to circle back to the legislation aspect. Can you explain to me, Bruce, what, someone talked about punitive measures, and what exactly would a legislation look like? And I'm, you know, I've been reading the aptem study, and it seems quite clear that, at least in that engineering report, that the bulkheads need to get secured. And then it also seems to me that without legislation, it may never happen. So can you explain to me more how this would work?
Our intent with the legislation, and I'm not sure if it translated in the way it was written, was to, when there's development or redevelopment, that you build a bulkhead to a certain level. And of course, we were taking care of, identified the naughty nine is what they called. And I think when we're complete with ours, that'll be six or seven of them that have been done. But it was just to, not to be punitive, but it may have been written that way. It was just to require during redevelopment, that was our goal, is to require you to do that. And also, if there's identified, this is maybe more the punitive about any kind of nuisance issues, if we're identified, to maybe work with the property owners there to require some kind of...
Yeah. So if your property flood, I mean, if your property, if Mike Hoffers property is flooding all of their neighbors and damaging their property, and Mike refuses to put in a bulkhead, what's the next step for the town?
And that's my, that's my question. So it's not just about redevelopment, but it could also apply to an existing lot that's not being developed.
Right. Yeah, that was the, I think that was the sticking point, is that, that piece.
You could not apply the nuisance abatement ordinance against someone, a transgression taking place.
Yeah, I'd like to point out that, you know, if I was the only deciding person up here, I'm not saying that I would want to force people to necessarily pay for bulkheads on their own. I would advocate for the town to work with people, but we have to have the authority to get them on board.
And that was one of the things Representative Miller and I have discussed, but we haven't had any recent discussions, but the potential of some kind of funding mechanism that would go into play if there was a nuisance issue or some kind of bulkhead that needed to be installed, that maybe there was some kind of...
Does that have to get that specific at the state legislation level?
For us to do it, even for us to spend money on a private property without their permission would require some kind of legislation.
It would?
Yeah.
Yeah, the question is permission. If you're, using you as an example, if your property's flooding and it's the problem, can I force you to put in a bulkhead, right? Can the town build the bulkhead without your permission to protect surrounding properties? This is the legal, I'm just, I'm not pushing it one way or the other, but that's the legal landscape. And in general, we're a property rights-focused government nationwide. All the Western countries are pretty much a property rights-focused. So it gets into this real sticky legal area.
Where we can work together, it looks more like it did with the exposed parts of Henniker's Ditch five years ago with a 90-day, now if no one was here, she'd tell me. It'd come to me, but being able to do work on a private property for the purposes of the common good, which is what that was.
Yeah.
It looks like an easement, 90-day easement, temporary easement.
All right. Any other questions for...
One more. So the Washington Post, I think it was the Washington Post, about a month ago came out with an article, they talked about Carolina Beach, and they talked about in the year 2040 or 2050, we're talking seven inches of elevation of water. So does that, does that create a sense of urgency for you guys, number one? And have you guys looked at that piece?
Yeah. We worked with the Washington Post to show them some of the different areas of flooding in the community and backchecked some of their statements.
Seven inches is a lot.
What? And we are modeling sea level rise. But for this, yes. Absolutely. To the sense of urgency, absolutely. And yes, we are, we are taking that into account in the model.
But I would say it's more urgent than 2050. It's not just tides anymore and tide atop sea level rise. It's wind, and just a little bit of wind in this area can really pile up water. So I'm not worried about 2050. I'm worried about 2030 and sooner than...
Twenty twenty.
I'm worried about next year.
Tomorrow.
I'm worried about tomorrow. Yeah.
Awesome. I won't even be here in 2050. Oh, you're going to be here, Jake. Be 180 or something.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you, guys. Fantastic presentation. We appreciate the work you're doing.
Thank you.
It's a good job.
Bruce, when do we see them again? Scheduled to bring them back? Is there, is that still TBD?
Yeah, I think it's up to them. When they get their next modeling set up, yeah.
Okay. Next on the agenda is a resol, boy, my tongue doesn't work today. Resolution authorizing the town of Carolina Beach to submit an application to the WMPO for a block grant on a sidewalk project. Jeremy, is that you?
Yes, sir. Pull this up. Look at that sidewalk.
It's done already. Jeremy has a picture.
It's just a little illustration they did, just for the area that I'd like to discuss with you. This is a request to, for staff to apply for a sidewalk grant from the Wilmington WMPO. It's a surface transportation block grant. This includes pedestrian sidewalks, projects. Through the Department of Transportation and also council has identified installing sidewalks on South Lake Park Boulevard. We have looked at from the Carolina Beach Lake to Carolina Sands. We have, the Department of Transportation has gone with the cost of that project. They're having a contribution as well. Then we were also asked to look at, to Tennessee. And we have that, they went back and fine-tuned that cost as well. And part of our existing pedestrian plan is to have a sidewalk from, to Alabama. So we looked at that and said, there was a grant that just, just came available. Staff was looking to apply for it. We wanted to get town councils' take. And along with the DOT contribution, there's a 20% matching grant. So if you work backwards, and these are using DOTs, it's just, you know, it's, the complete project is right under 1.5 million DOT. So they had allocated 183,000 for it. That brings you just under 1.3. The grant would be the 80% for the awarded would be over, just over a million. That would include the 20% town match to be 259,000.
Which we have already allocated, right?
You have, yes.
Council's already approved, actually, a little more than that.
More than that, yes.
Yeah. So let me walk back through the history to make sure for everyone. So this is a well-known problem. It's been identified for many years. We originally got approached by the DOT. We got the, whatever that 183,000 was, to do the side, to do the sidewalk to Carolina Sands. Then they did the engineering and all the, you know, what you figure out where you can actually put this, the stormwater impacts and all that sort of stuff. And then council approved recently 600 or so thousand, what, I don't remember the exact number, to go with that money to finish that project. So we're go at that point. This is saying, hey, this doesn't really solve the whole problem. The problem is to get Wilmington Beach tied in from a pedestrian pathway perspective, right? So what you guys are doing is now backing up and saying, with this new grant opportunity, let's try to do the whole thing. Is that a good characterization of where we are?
Correct.
And from council's standpoint, you already have the money needed for us if we would get this grant.
Correct. So we're just asking if council will agree or direct staff to apply for the grant.
Agree to submit it? I'm all for it.
I'm all for it.
Yeah.
Why would anyone be against it? You kidding me?
Get the whole thing and some money back.
This is a huge, huge problem because I, you guys probably do, too. But I drive that stretch of road. That's how I go home. And in the summertime, the, just recently, you know, I told the story last time about lady pushing her stroller down Lake Park Boulevard and how dangerous that was. Duke Energy was putting in new power poles, and they had some of the right-of-way kind of coned off. So people were literally... So people were literally walking down the center, this is during the 4th of July period, right? It's like, it's, it's, it's just bad. It's just bad. I don't have to say it any other way. There needs to be a sidewalk there, in my opinion. I don't think anybody up here disagrees. I'm kind of preaching to the choir. Mike, you've been working on this forever.
It was, I was out last night. It was very crowded, surprisingly crowded last night, a Monday night. So you don't know, I'm not going to argue with this. Although, may I ask, how would this affect the project we've already kicked off? Kicked off, if you will, with DOT?
So the, um, the award for this grant would occur in October. We're not going to do anything with DOT until after the repaving of Lake Park Boulevard. So we're hoping we could secure these funds and then contribute and then let DOT, okay, here's the scope of the project. They're going to manage it and with, um, with the town's contribution along with the grant to fund the project.
So you don't think this, I know where Mike's going is you, you don't want to see this slow down. If this creates another set of hurdles that delays this, I'm putting words in your mouth, so.
Essentially is what I'm saying.
Yeah. I think because we were already on a delay because we're waiting for the, uh, resurfacing that, uh, this would not delay any project we've already committed to.
So if we didn't get this, if we do get this, we'll, we'll just be able to extend the project in the same timeframe, you think? And if we don't get this, we're still will continue to Carolina Sands on the current plan. Is that what we're saying?
But it's, if, look, comparing it to say the St. Joseph project, okay? We hire engineers and it goes through DOT and all this, you know, that standard process versus the process we're looking at with our agreement with DOT to do that sidewalk. So it does, if this was awarded, does it go to that St. Joseph model where different engineer does the work and DOT approved, uh, you know, reviews it? Or would DOT be able to manage the project just like our current plan?
Uh, it would be a DOT project working with their engineers.
So they kick it up with the surveys and the notification to business private property.
Correct. Yeah. We wouldn't, we would not be the, the middle man other than financially.
Gotcha. That, that, thank you.
How long does the application process take?
Uh, the pre-application is August 9th. Uh, that will, um, review the submittal deadline for that is, the final submittal is September 13th. And then they're looking to award the money in October.
Yeah. And remember, these are awarded by the WMPO. And we, we start with one vote already, which is me. But that, that's a much shorter process than typically than what you're thinking about. This is, these are block grants that are given by the federal government to the WMPO to disperse at their will. And I will tell you last year, Deb, you might've been in some of those meetings where they didn't give out all the money they had. So, uh, not, this is a big month, this is big dollars here though, but I'm not, don't want to.
And it's a call for projects and we just want to make sure we're on the list and.
Yeah. So I think it's a good chance of this and it should be quick. All right. Uh, you need a motion for this one, right? Okay. So motion to approve resolution number 24 dash 2310. Resolution authorizing town of Carolina Beach submitted application to the Wilmington Urban Area Metropolitan Planning Organization in the amount of 1.29683. I didn't say that right, but that's the right number. Um, motion on the floor, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. None opposed, unanimous. Awesome.
By means of the review, Jeremy, when could, it's an FY25 project for DOT, the paving of Lake Park. Could it, the earliest to begin is September, correct? Or October?
Yeah, depending on when we get that final timeline of the resurfacing project.
Remember that, because we're now in FY25.
Yes. But we, didn't we hear last time that the paving may be sooner? Remember originally they said it could actually happen in 2026 at one point, right, Mike?
Once upon a time, that was potential. Of all they were saying was, when they were saying it was the 2025, they meant that in 2025, they would award the project. So if that, it could have been done in 2026.
Right.
Saying that right?
Yeah.
Yeah, the, the schedule I think has been accelerated.
I think so too.
Which then would give you a better idea in terms of the sidewalk itself in general, whatever permitation it takes.
I, I, a little quick statement here, there's one person in the crowd who was at the last bike and pedestrian meeting. And I quoted something terribly wrong. I had interpreted what you had said at the last council meeting that it was going to be $700,000 to take a sidewalk from Carolina Sands to Tennessee.
That was the original quote.
Okay. I, I didn't hear that wrong. Okay.
Yeah, they, they pared it, pared it down and.
Okay. Well, then I wasn't misquoting you. All right.
Okay, next agenda. Not today, ma'am. It's a workshop. Uh, we do have regular council meetings on the second Tuesday at 6:00 and you are more than welcome to come speak at that. All right. Um, uh, agenda item four, second reading of resolution 242307. This is the abandoned vessels. Are we actually reading that aloud? Do we need to?
Just need to adopt it. It's.
We just need to adopt it? Okay. So this is, uh, the county, let me see if I get the history right here. So the county passed an ordinance, which we've been asking for, for a long time, uh, to take responsibility for abandoned vessels in their area.
Yeah, outside our jurisdiction.
So now for us to allow them to work within our jurisdiction, we need to work with us. We need to adopt this, right? This is us concurring that we're going to work with the sheriff, basically.
Exactly.
In a non-legal description.
Right.
Okay. Awesome.
And this basically mirrors Brunswick County's.
Yeah, this, not as much teeth, we don't think. I think we, I totally think there's some things they could add. And I don't think it's as strong as ours, but they could add, but it's a great start and we're excited that they're doing this.
Yeah, this is good to see the county take a holistic view because right now we've just been pushing derelict vessels off whoever we can. You know, we do some wildlife, nonprofits are doing some, I mean, it's, it's, it kind of pulls us together, which is real important, I think. All right. So, uh, motion to approve resolution 24 dash 2307, supporting New Haven County's ordinance on abandoned vessels. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. And the last, uh, item Bruce's discussion on community building repairs.
Yes. Um, I think I explained to council that we had some plumbing issues there. We've got the building shut down right now that we got the quote back and we're looking at about $30,000 worth of plumbing repairs need to be made, repairs, and then re, it's under the concrete, so we had to go back and pave. Um, I know that we have groups using it, in particular one, uh, we are going to reach out to them, let them know they can continue to use it. We'll just have, we have a porta potty out there that we got for the volleyball courts because they required restrooms. So we'll let them know they can use it until we, uh, make further decisions. We budgeted in this year's budget, 70,000 for some roof repairs and some interior repairs. Um, and this is just another 30,000. We don't have budget. We'd have to come back and look for that funding. What I was proposing to what council would consider is that maybe direct staff, um, I know there's some significance to this building, especially the, uh, when it was built and the library, the history there and how it was built. But come back with some, some options for council to look at. You know, I know we need restrooms there for the, for the volleyball courts, so we have, that's a requirement, building code. Whether it's renovated as is or changed or whatever, just some, some discussion at the retreat we will have in August. Just if, if council would like that on the agenda, something to consider.
Maybe some renderings on what meets.
Yeah, yeah.
So let's make sure I understand the numbers. So what you're saying is, what I heard was $100,000 of repairs are needed.
And that, that's to just.
That's just to.
The bare minimum.
Bare minimum.
Yeah. If we really want to redo it, it could, it'd probably cost.
So I like that approach. I would rather take a holistic look as to, let's, uh, let's don't ban, $100,000 with a Band-Aids is a lot of money.
Right.
Right. And if that's all, if that fixes the problems, then okay, I'm all right with it. But I like the idea of taking a holistic approach.
It's something that.
Look at it and bring us back some examples at the retreat or whenever the appropriate time is. Um, it also gives us a, are, are we okay operating as is with the porta, I don't, none of us like porta potties, but.
Technically, we shouldn't be, but we've, we, not, not code, obviously not, not working restrooms in there. But I know this is the one group in particular that uses it and it's a pretty important group. So we want to make sure they still have a place to meet, um, and just have that porta potty as the.
Sitting inhabit there, it's still an open work. It's still an open project.
Right, right. Yeah. We just have to block off things that are restrooms.
So just, just an FYI, the group that uses it, they have found some other place for the time being right now, which is the church down the street.
Okay. Well, we'll talk with them and see if they're still in need. If not, we will hold, just keep it closed until.
If we're going to spend a hundred plus on it, it seems that it would be prudent for us to look at the whole holistic problem. What, what is this building? What, what could this be?
Yeah, yeah.
If we're going to spend that much money. And a part of that.
I'm not trying to.
We should use it.
I'm not trying to guide it one way or the other. I'm just trying to say if we're, at some point, you spend enough money on your house, you have to ask yourself, what are we doing here?
Right. I hope that conversation will, you'll bring to us specifically how much it is being used currently.
Yeah.
So is there a porta john out there now? Is that being locked up in off hours or something?
I don't think so.
I know that I can see Mark sweating over there right now. Should it be? Is that a better scenario?
No.
Shouldn't be locked up?
It's a public restroom and you consider it a public restroom, so it would be a cleaning day. It's just working as a porta john.
Yeah, I'm not a fan of porta johns, but you gotta have something over there. Okay. Uh, did you need, just consensus of council, I think you got that.
That's one of the things we'll have on your agenda for the, I think it's August 27th, I believe the, we'll do a, I'll give you more, we'll get more details down as good.
To finish up the agenda, council comments?
I got nothing today.
I've got one and I talked to Brian earlier about this. This is a true story. So I'm going OTB, driving down Cape Fear with my wife. We're going to go to PT's and have a burger. Yes, we're health nuts. Uh, and Cape Fear, there's a detour sign pointing left and it's been there for a while. And my wife says, why is that detour sign there? I says, I don't know. She goes to, uh, see, click, fix. She reports it. We go have a burger. We're driving home and she says to me, do you think the sign's down? I said, hell no. There's no way. It's been an hour and the sign was down. The purpose of the story is first of all, thank you, Brian, but it works. See, click, fix, works. I'm not, I'm not going to say it's going to happen in an hour, but it works.
I can't tell you the number of times that members of this council end up entering see, click, fix for stuff we see on Facebook. And sometimes, you know how Facebook is, you might not see it for three or four days, if you see it at all.
Yeah.
And it's like, man.
I got one better than that. People send me texts and say, hey, Deb, can you report this?
Yeah, but stop putting it on Facebook and start putting it in, or do both. I don't care if you put it on Facebook, but put it, put it, put it in so staff can get to it.
Was that it, Jay?
That's it.
Mike?
Uh, guys, everybody, I just implore you to be safe out there. You know, bicyclists and pedestrians, we just keep having issues. And it seems like more often than not, it's on the cyclist and on the pedestrian. You have got to watch out for yourself out there, folks. Here's the thing, if you're driving your vehicle and you're being unsafe and irresponsible, you can kill someone, you can end someone's life. But if you're going out walking and biking and you're being irresponsible, yes, you can end your own life, but you can also ruin somebody else's. Okay? So, you know, the, the pedestrian that was hit a year or two ago, I'm assuming the driver of the vehicle was distraught over that. And every time. And I, I just can't say it enough. Please, it's not to you guys, it's to you, the public. Please watch yourself. Only you are responsible for your safety.
True, Mike. We heard a lot about speeding in the neighborhoods, uh, recently. So something to consider, I believe we're doing phase three for repaving in October fall. Try to get it before the temperature threshold doesn't allow us to do so. Maybe a contingency amount for any recommended and then approved traffic calming, measures that would take, that would avoid two movements, two mobilizations, however much it would entail of asphalt to come down, have that at the ready to be done and used for those places that come back to us and look like trouble spots. So. Because I think we see that too.
Yeah. So, uh, my issue, as you guys know, I've shared with you, um, a number of sleepless nights over e-bikes. And it's the most frustrating thing I think I have ever been associated with. E-bikes are a very positive addition to the community, especially for older folks when used responsibly. We had the police chief in here talk to us about how difficult it was for the police. Given the current legislation, you know, that these things are considered bicycles by the DOT. No matter what we want to call them or whether we think they're motorized vehicles, it doesn't matter. The DOT says they are not. So I decided to, I don't have any bikes. I didn't know anything about it. So I, I decided to do a little investigation, partially to check on the police chief. I trust him. I do trust him, but is it really as hard or are they really trying and is it as hard as it seems? And what I found was startling. These, these bikes are mass produced. Uh, first off, they're very expensive. Um, some of these ones that are flying around at high speeds, two, three, $4,000. I mean, these are motorcycles in my book. As a lifelong motorcycle rider, it has all the same dangers. But what I, what did surprise me was how easy these things are to modify. You can buy one, uh, with the pedal kit, you can take that pedal kit off, which now makes it no longer bicycle, which is easy and we see that all around town. Uh, you can modify most of them by simply, uh, with no tools, by simply going into the computer, putting it in maintenance mode and say, I want this bike to go faster. And you can push them up north of 40 miles an hour. If you're willing to put a little larger wheel on them, you can make them go much faster than that. So my point is that I'm frustrated, but I do see what the chief is talking about. I now have a better understanding of how our police officers are in an almost unenforceable situation with these things. The MPO has requested legislation changes. The town has requested legislation changes. Uh, I think pretty much every town in the state has requested legislation changes. I hear the frustration from the public wanting this group, this body to do something and I'm willing to do something if we can figure out what that is. But I can't, until we get some legislative changes, I don't, I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm just frustrated. That's what I'm here to say. I'm frustrated, uh, on e-bikes. Because ultimately, there's a parent that bought that e-bike and gave it to the 14-year-old. And we've had how many? We've had at least two major e-bike accidents. I mean, life-threatening level. Luckily, I don't think we've had a death, but we've had some serious, uh, accidents and I don't see it getting any better. So I didn't have a point to this. I'm not driving to anything. I just want to express my frustration. I know you guys are frustrated because I've talked to every one of you. Uh, this comes up quite a bit. But I'll say the same thing we told the chief. If there's anything this body can do, if there's any legal, anything we can do, bring it to us. I, I don't know what that would be, but I think you've got our support to do whatever we need to do. That's all I had. I just wanted to.
Good point, Mayor. Charlie asked for assistance the other night, you know, he's talking to us in a very casual format. That's a non-material solution, if there is one. Maybe a point of sale, um, note that whether sold as or modified, a motor that's capable of exceeding speeds or a speed threshold that defines a motorcycle is an acknowledgement of exactly that and a driver's license is being required for purchase.
So if you look.
And that drives a DMV, that may be there.
And you also have, um, motor, the people ride these off-road too, that, you know, they sell motorcycles to kids.
I don't think we're hand wringing entirely. I don't believe that at all. I know we want to try to get after this. Point of sale is a way to maybe do it without trying to have police at every corner. And now there's something, let your non-licensed child ride something that requires a driver's license. There you go.
So if you look at motorcycle accidents, that I know well. So to get a motorcycle license, you have to have, take the motorcycle rider course. You have to be a licensed driver for at least, I think it's six months before you can apply for your motorcycle license. Um, you have to be a licensed driver for at least, I think it's six months before you can apply for your motorcycle license. There's all kinds of rules around this. We know statistically that fifty percent of motorcycle accidents happen to riders in their first six months of riding a motorcycle. Not that older riders or longer-term riders don't get injured. Translate that to twelve, thirteen, and fourteen-year-old kids who do not even have a license yet. It's, it's just, I, I, you, you just want to go whack some people. I mean, it's like, this is just nonsensical. Um, but unfortunately, and I heard this from residents, somebody have to die first. And I thought to myself, is, unfortunately, that might be the case, before the state acts. I, I don't know. I, I don't know, but it's, it's, it's just not, not good. Now, hey, I'm all for these kids having fun, I ran around this beach, I did a lot of things I wouldn't want to sit up here and say. Um, I, I get the, the need, but it's our job as the adults to protect them. That includes their parents from killing themselves, right, so. Alright, I've preached enough on e-bikes. Any other comments from council? Alright, with that, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.